Good evening and welcome to the September 24th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight, and we're also glad to have those that are at home that are watching on television. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have Amari Lawrence, a fifth grade student at Hobgood, and Chioli Lamone, a sixth grade student at Salem Elementary, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by a moment of silence.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may our movement of silence.
Good evening Board. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.200 and Tennessee Code annotated Section 49-2-202(c)(2) and Section 25-6 of the Murfreesboro City Code, Board Officers are to be elected annually. The state statute mandates that the Board only elect a Board Chair, however Board Policy 1.200 mandates that the Board elect a Board Chair and Vice Chair. The term for the officers to be elected will be from November 1st, 2019 through October 31st, 2020. Nominations for Board Chair will be given, followed by a roll call vote, and then nominations will be taken for Vice Chair with a roll call vote to follow. A majority of the entire Board, which is four votes, is necessary for one to be voted into office. Board Officers cannot be elected by acclamation. After nominations have been made and seconded, Mrs. Van Cleve will call your name and you should state the name of the nominee who you are voting for. Please remember that it takes four votes for a member to be elected. So at this time, Mr. Campbell, if you would, call for nominations for Board Chair.
So do. A call for nominate for Board Chair, I thought you were doing all this. Mr. Settles?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate, uh, what's his name? Which Campbell?
Mr. Taylor, you have a motion and a second.
Are there any more nominees? Okay, Mrs. Van Cleve, if you would, call the roll.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Ms. Barton?
Aye.
Ms. Dahl?
Um.
Mr. LaRage?
Yes for Mr. Campbell.
Ms. Moore?
Aye for Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Settle?
Yes for Mr. Campbell.
And Mr. Campbell?
Yes for Mr. Campbell. You're my only choice, isn't it?
Mr. Campbell received seven votes, which is a majority, and will be the Board Chair. Now we'll call for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Settles as Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Mrs. Van Cleve, if you would, call the roll.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Ms. Barton?
Aye.
Ms. Dahl?
Uh-huh.
Mr. LaRage?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Yes for Mr. Settles.
Mr. Settles?
Yes for Mr. Settles.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, aye.
With seven votes, Mr. Settles will be the Chair. Vice Chair.
Moving on over. I thought you'd taken over already. Thank you very much Board, I really do appreciate your vote of confidence, and I hope we get, I'm sure that we will, with the Board that we have, is a very well-working-together Board, and I'm sure we will have a banner of a year. Thank you very much for your vote of confidence. All right, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board, you have seen a copy of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Mr. Chairman, that's a move.
Thank you, Mr. Settles, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dahl, any discussion? Yes ma'am, Ms. Barton?
Yes, I see on our tables we're having score reports, is that right? Wonderful. Would we be able to do that before we do the extension of contract?
Uh, it's not on the agenda in that manner.
Well, under the state law, the extension of the contract has to be the first action item on the agenda.
Okay, thanks.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as printed, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. Communications?
Good evening Board. We are delighted to recognize Mr. Jim Pettit tonight. Jim is one of those guys who really helps us keep everything moving at Murfreesboro City Schools in the building process. He wears a hard hat sometimes and a soft hat sometimes, and keeps us all in line, so we did want to take opportunity for Jim, if you want to join us up here. Jim is an architect with Johnson &amp; Bailey, and as you know, Johnson &amp; Bailey is the response school party for making sure that Salem opened on time. So we are truly delighted, you working with the city, working with Mr., there he is, Mr. Duke, and everyone else, so thank you on behalf of Murfreesboro City Schools for being on the ground, in the air, just about anywhere you looked during the building process, Jim was there. So, thank you.
If I can make one comment, when we started Salem, talking about Salem, the first meeting, there was the comment made, well, we'll be in by December, which would be another few months from now, and I think largely to Jim's work and working with the city so closely, we turned that school in, so I really am grateful to him. The last thing I heard from Jim, he was on, I got you, but I know better. The last thing I heard from Jim, I got a picture of him on the floor, I believe it was in the kitchen, was it in the kitchen? With his arm down a drain, trying to see what was wrong with the drain, so literally when Ms. Trail talks about Mr. Pettit being on the ground, he is wherever he needs to be, so I don't, he's not a man that likes to take credit, but I can tell you that I certainly appreciate the relationship he has had with us and the work that he's done to get what we needed to have happen, happen.
Absolutely. I'm going to be turning the microphone over several times tonight. We do have a group of our Murfreesboro City School nurses here tonight, and we want to recognize them for their hard work. They certainly make life a lot easier for a lot of us in the schools, but I want to go ahead and bring Sarah Walker, who is the nurse supervisor, to the podium and let her tell her story much better than I can.
Thanks. Hello Board. When most of us think about school nurses, we often think of Band-Aids, ice packs, temperature checks, calls home for broken bones. Those are definitely things we see on a regular basis, but our school nurses do so much more than boo-boos and Band-Aids. We are fortunate enough with Murfreesboro City Schools to have a school nurse in every single building, and that's amazing. That means all 9,000-plus kids have a medical professional close by on a daily basis to assist with a broad spectrum of ailments and injuries, and that the staff have the same. Did you know that almost every school has at least one diabetic? On average, there are three per school, but some have up to five. That's a large number, and each year, more and more children are diagnosed with type 1 diabetes, which is one reason it's so vital to have a school nurse in every building. We are in constant communication with Vanderbilt Diabetes Clinic, teachers, parents, and other staff regarding their behaviors and signs and symptoms of low blood sugar. In addition to diabetes, we also have many students with seizure disorder, cardiac problems, life-threatening allergies, and severe asthma, which is the number-one reason for absences nationwide. Also, students with lactose intolerance, food sensitivities, those suffering from sickle cells, spina bifida, cerebral palsy, cystic fibrosis, and students with tube feeding, and students that need medication administration, and so much more. Our nurses see, assess, and treat a plethora of sicknesses, disabilities, and diseases on a daily basis. Last year, our nurses across the district saw a combined total of over 47,000 visits, between sick visits and medications. The nurses also monitor immunizations for compliance in all students, not just kindergarten. Last year, I think we had one or two non-compliant kindergartens district-wide, that's amazing. Each fall, our nurses promote flu prevention with a flu campaign that oftentimes the students help with. If you're in their buildings, check out their bulletin boards and their doors. Another thing I'd like to shed light upon is the hard work and dedication they bring to our Project Adam program, the CPR and AED training to the schools and ESP staff. Just two weeks ago, they trained 164 EAs, Special Area Teachers, in CPR, AED, and First Aid, another 75 over the summer, and all of the bus drivers and bus aides right before school. During the 2018-19 school year, we implemented mandatory fifth-grade CPR classes. This means every fifth grader throughout the district learned the importance of CPR and how to perform it. Think of the things, think of the good those things that training can help with, not just in our school, but in our community. Our school district is now a Project Adam HeartSafe certified district. That means that each school has a Code Blue team led by the nurse who is in, who in a crisis situation will be able to administer lifesaving techniques to students, staff, and family members. Our nurses put together code teams, train them in CPR and AED, run practice drills in the fall and the spring, and even are assessed and critiqued by Vanderbilt staff members. Project Adam is a big deal, and we are so proud to be recognized by their organization. All of the nurses have taken the ACES training, and last year, they all attended a poverty simulation. We will continue to learn to deal with mental health issues as they are becoming more prevalent. To be honest, I could go on and on about the incredible team and the amazing job they do, so I'll wrap it up. It's been quite apparent to me for some time now just how hard our nurses work to care, care for, love, and protect our students and staff on a daily basis, and I hope you all have learned a little bit about the work they do. They truly are some of the unsung heroes in the school district, and I'm so proud to get to bring attention and recognition to them. They are well-deserved, and my coworkers and my friends. Thank you to the school nurses, and thank you to the Board. Some of them are here, and I'd like for them to stand up, come up here and be recognized. Are there any questions?
I would just love to comment, having been a principal in our system for so long, I can't tell you the number of great nurses that I've worked with. Kudos to our system, to begin with, that we have one in every school. You can't even imagine what a difference that makes in the front office, and for the safety of our kids. And then, yay, nurses, y'all do such a great job. There's so many of you that I don't know as well, because all the ones I've worked with have retired or gone, but I do know Ashley Archer, she was my last nurse, and she was fabulous, so, thank you.
She's now our district support nurse, and she is fabulous. She helps out a lot.
Thank you very much, I appreciate, we appreciate you being here, and all the nurses, and as Ms. Barton said, I know that you are an integral part of every building. Thank you for your service and your help. Thank you ma'am.
We're going to run from one support fabulous group to another. You guys have heard us speak about Farm to School, in fact, for the past five years, we've been speaking about Farm to School. So tonight, we have several of our students here with us, from Reeves Rogers, Overall, Case &amp; Lane, Irma Siegel, and Discovery. They went to the State Fair, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Victoria. Well, they went to the State Fair, and their vegetables went to the State Fair, and let Victoria tell you just a little bit about what's going on with, and why these students are with us tonight.
All right, can I please have my Farm to School students go ahead and join me up here? My name is Victoria Einicker, and I'm the Farmer Educator for Murfreesboro City Schools, so this year, we had seven schools enter into the State Fair. We had five schools come away with ribbons, and three of those schools won multiple ribbons. So Irma Siegel, we have Emma here, they won two second-place ribbons, one in bell peppers and one in banana peppers. I have my Discovery students right here, I have one, two, three, we got three students here, and they actually won third place in their bell peppers. Overall Creek, where are you? Overall Creek, go ahead and join me right up here for just a moment here. We have two of our students here, and they actually won first place in their banana peppers.
All right, banana peppers.
Yeah, they were, they were so excited, they actually had to go ahead, and for these schools, they had to show multiple vegetables, and they had, they were judged on uniformity, and if you would buy them in, buy them in the store. And I also have Case &amp; Lane, go ahead and join me up front here, I know we're having to move a little bit, but they actually won first place in eggplant and second place in tomatoes. Yes. All right, and we have one last school, all the way towards the back, we have Alice Sally, who was our site director, and Reeves Rogers won three ribbons.
Woo!
So, yes. All right, and it was first place in?
Bell peppers.
Bell peppers.
Second place in eggplant and third place in tomatoes, yes.
So thank you so much for allowing us to do Farm to School. These students, they came away with so many vegetables, I was talking to their parents, and they just said, "We save so much money." So, thank you guys. All right.
I have a question.
Well, Victoria, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Settles has a question.
I'm so excited about the Farm project thing, you always do such a great job, this is one of my favorite times. Okay, here's my question, so we got all these wonderful bell peppers and tomatoes and stuff like that, I noticed I didn't have anything on my desk that looked like a tomato or bell pepper, or even an eggplant. I would take one of, either one of those, but I'm wondering, do we do any canning with this?
We do not do canning at the moment, so our primary reason for Farm to School is that we're growing food for the cafeteria. Anything extra is going home with the students, so canning is definitely in our future. We actually had the Extension Agency bring up quite a few times that they want to go ahead and do this program, to figure out how to go ahead and can, and I know our banana pepper students would definitely appreciate that, because banana peppers, they taste the best when they're pickled.
They certainly do, so whenever that starts, you know, give me a call, I want to get in on some canning and eating.
Yeah, we'll do that for sure, thank you.
Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, I wanted to comment about the nurses. One reason that we had them come now is because of the CPR, that was done just within a two-week time span, and we knew that we had the full days, two-day time span. That's right, but I talked to you about two weeks before and said, "Can you do it?", and you put it together within two weeks, so that was great. But we had the two days, and so they did, they planned for the two days, for those educational assistants to get that training, and did a terrific job. They have literally saved lives this year, and there's stories we could tell about that, so really, really appreciate what they do. The Farm to School, they work very closely with our content areas, with their teachers, they talk about the standards, they bring that into the actual teaching, into the steam, work very closely with Coordinated School Health, they work together, and also with Sandy Shealy with the cafeteria, so two just really, really special programs, both that deal with the health of our children, so thank you all.
I have noticed over at Black Fox, Mr. Settles, and I'll tell you this, they have just started their Farm to School, and they've got their greenhouse, is that what you call it, up, and also they've got four areas out front that they've got eggplant, and I think cucumbers planted, so I watch those daily as I walk, and I'll let you know when they're ready to cultivate, maybe, if I don't get them first.
I did want to take time to invite everyone to the Black Fox ribbon cutting of their greenhouse, which is this Friday, and Mr. Campbell, if you want to volunteer to water those plants every week or every day?
I can do that, I know where the hose pipe is, I certainly can.
Victoria, okay, so I have you a waterer now, that's always the biggest struggle, but we will-
When is that ribbon cutting?
This Friday, you should have received an invitation this week, it's at nine, nine o'clock Friday at Black Fox Elementary.
Okay, thank you.
And we will be cutting one more ribbon for a greenhouse and getting some plants and vegetables. They already have raised beds as well, so we're very proud of that. As I go on through this, now that we have a definite watering system at Black Fox, Victoria, you can pay me later for that one. Sandy Shealy, our supervisor of nutrition, recently presented at the Conditions for Learning Conference, the title of her session was Feed to Achieve Why School Breakfast Matters to All Schools. Also at that same conference, Heather Anderson with our MCS Social Work Team also represented MCS on a social work panel, so we appreciate both of those ladies representing us at Conditions for Learning. Additionally, Sandy and I presented at the National Farm to School Grand T Conference in New Orleans last week. The session was, we actually presented to planning grants, so the grant we just received was an implementation grant, we received the planning grant five years ago, and they asked us to come back and just kind of walk through that process, so that was fun to do, to actually go back and look at where we've come in five years. Murfreesboro City Schools is also proud to announce that Mary Beth Arnett, a teacher at Black Fox Elementary and currently Miss Middle Tennessee USA 2020, will be competing in October for the title of Miss Tennessee USA 2020, which leads to Miss USA. We're so excited to have Ms. Arnett representing Murfreesboro City Schools, and of course, she joins our other Miss, oh my goodness, I just, hmm. I'm hearing y'all, Brianna Mason, I'm sorry, I was hearing you, Brianna Mason, who's from Hobgood, who's representing across the state right now, so we're just going everywhere, which is really awesome, and I apologize to Brianna for just completely blanking on her name. Congratulations to our Board Member Becky Goff, who competed her Level 1 Boardship, so congratulations Becky, yay. And it's also time again for Ready for Kindergarten to begin at Hobgood Elementary. The meetings will be in October, January, and March. Our Outreach Department, our Instruction Department, Read to Succeed, Carissa, everyone working together to pull this off, and we're very, very pleased to have that going again for this school year. Those are all of my announcements, do you have any questions?
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent items on the agenda?
I have a question.
Mr. Ballard?
I have a, I don't know who or how these get input, but when it comes across on our e-files here, it's hard for, to read, I don't know if all of you had that problem, but I had a terrible problem with it, so just if there's anything we can do to clean it up, but I did have a question, on Discovery School, fifth and sixth grade is going to land between the lakes in October, and the cost per student is $200, and then later, Scales is going at $150 per student, and I'm wondering what the-
Number of days, maybe?
Could that be a number of days?
Because it's less, it was less than that for us at Pitter, with three days, so.
Could be days of programs that they participate in while they're there.
Yeah, forgot about that.
So some will go longer than others then.
And you, and there are programs there that you pay for, and so probably based on how much money they had, they bought additional programs, maybe?
Ms. Johnson, how many days are you going, Scales?
I have to go on October 16 through the 18.
Okay, do you know about Discovery? Do you have any idea?
I have homes, but I do know that there is farm activities on the family.
Yes, I was going to, I was going to say, I think that comes up every year around this time when we talk about that trip, is that somebody's-
The lakes, yeah. Well, I thought at first, last year it was reversed, it was like volume made the difference. This year, it doesn't seem like there's a volume discount in there, so, so anyway, that was my question, so.
Any other questions on the consent items? Not to have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. Okay, I'm coming, rolling on down. Action items. At our last meeting in Sep, in August, we had on the agenda to begin the process of looking at a two-year extension on the current contract for our Director of Schools. At that time, we as the Board wanted to meet and perhaps get into some questions. Ms. Taylor was going to meet with us, but then found out that we could not do that, we were going to do it on September the 10th, but we could not. After that, Ms. Taylor and I, along with Dr. Gilbert, as per Board Policy, met to discuss the Director's contract, and you were sent a copy of that contract on September the 17th, and you were encouraged at that point in time that if you had any questions, to contact Ms. Taylor. At this time, after assuming that you did as such, at this time, as Board Chair, and after meeting with Dr. Gilbert and Ms. Taylor, I make a motion that we give the Director of Schools a two-year extension on her present contract, which will end then on December 31st, 2023.
Will we have discussion?
I make that as a motion. Second? Have a second. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Barton?
Yes, the same questions I raised last time. I did also reach out and talk to three or four other districts, they're not necessarily neighboring, a couple of them are, and they also said that what they have done in the past is on a, if you were down to one year, they've given a two-year extension, they've never done a two-year on top of a two-year, and said that that wasn't necessarily the typical thing to do. Again, I bring up with principals, principals have a year-to-year contract, I realize her job is larger and takes more time, but I just feel like four years is a long time. We get new scores every year, we get, and I'm not, I would say that about anybody. We get, and I'm not, I'm, I would say that about anybody. It's not personal. I just don't think it's a good idea to, we, we've still got two years on this contract. This time next year, yeah, I could see us doing that, but not at this point.
Mr. Ballard?
I had some feedback the last couple of days regarding item 11, the loyalty. And I think we've come to a good understanding on this, uh, just in consulting back and forth with one another. My concern was it says the director may undertake consulting work, speaking engagements, writing, teaching or a college or university course, lecturing, or other professional duties and obligations with, which do not interfere in a material or substantial manner with the discharge of the director's duties and responsibilities. That's a whole lot said, but my point was that left it, to me, in my experience, that left it wide open. So we wanted to tweak it a little bit to favor the, the board and the, and the citizens in that we have now come to, and I guess Elizabeth, maybe you want to read what we just drafted? Or is that appropriate to do at this time for, and so the rest of the board members know what we've input?
So based on Mr. Ballard's feedback, I gave him some proposed language that I thought might get to what he wanted to see changed in the contract. And what we came up with, and I also have discussed it with Dr. Gilbert, would be to add language that says, prior to accepting secondary or outside employment with compensation as a consultant or in a teaching position at a university or college, the director shall seek the approval of the board to determine if the position would prohibit the effective performance of the director's duties to the district or create an actual or potential conflict of interest. So in other words, if Dr. Gilbert wanted to pursue employment with compensation as a consultant or teaching at a university or college, she would seek the board's approval just to determine whether or not it would interfere with her duties as director or propose a conflict of interest to the district. So i.e. she wouldn't be able to like consult with a charter school that wanted to operate in the district or something along those lines, that type of conflict.
Dr. Gilbert, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Saddles?
My only concern would be when she'd have the time to do it. I just thought I'd throw that in there.
I agree. All right, any other discussion? Ms. Moore?
I also wanted to bring up, my initial concern was much like what Roseanne said about the length of this. You know, I'll admit, I have trouble with early voting even because I'm afraid that something's going to happen between that five days, between the end of early voting and election date. That's going to, you know, change my opinion on how I need to vote. So the thought of, uh, you know, a contract that has two years remaining and then extending it another two years feels really far to me. It gives me pause. So I spent some time, I did talk with Ms. Taylor about that before the negotiations. I'm guessing other people did not have the same concern since we were presented with the two-year extension. But looking at this, I looked at the, um, you know, the, the contract termination provision in here, which is 15, and I feel like there-
Where are you reading from, please?
It's number 15 on page four of the contract.
Okay, all right.
Or the end. And I'm not going to read from it, just to say that I feel like looking at this, we have plenty of, for lack of a better term, escape patches from this. Where if something did come up like what I'm talking about, that would change how we feel. We have a process in the contract that would allow us to get out of it. We would not be stuck on the hook for buying out the contract or anything. Basically, we just would have to give six months' notice. So that makes me feel a little better about the length. I will say that did give me pause as well, but I feel like the, the terms of the contract where, you know, if something unforeseen happened, we're not caught in the four years.
Mr. Saddles?
I did want to mention that we have a very interesting contract in that there's not a buyout clause. And I don't know too many higher education professionals that would take a job like that as a director of schools that don't have a buyout clause. I think, is it Tullahoma that's dealing with that now? Uh, one of these, one of our districts that's close by had to buy out the remainder of the contract. Who was it?
Metro Nashville.
Metro Nashville. And they are on the hook for more than $250 to buy out the remainder of that contract. So I think, uh, I think that's, that's pretty good. I'd like to talk to your attorney because he, he needs to take some medicine.
All right, any other question or discussion? All right, now, Mr. Ballard, are you making that in a motion to change the contract with the language that Ms. Taylor has read to us?
Uh, yes, I'll make that motion.
All right, do I have a second to that motion as an amendment to the contract?
I'll second that motion as an amendment to the contract.
All right. Roll call vote, please, on the amendment.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Ms. Barton?
No.
Ms. Goff?
Uh-huh.
Mr. LaRache?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Saddles?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Six aye, one no.
Okay, the amendment will be added into the contract. Now we will vote on the original motion to approve the two-year extension on the current contract with the amendment. Roll call vote, please. We've had a motion and a second for that. So now we're voting on the original motion with the amendment.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Ms. Barton?
No.
Ms. Goff?
Uh-huh.
Mr. LaRache?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Saddles?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Six aye, one no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad to have you. All right, reports and information. Personnel report.
Good evening. You have the personnel report in front of you. Are there any questions, comments? This is pretty standard for this time of year. Thank you.
Good job.
I could not believe we let him off that easily.
All right. All right, next up.
I have a, I did have a question.
Do you have a question, Mr. Saddles?
I'm sorry, Ralph. It doesn't, it doesn't pertain to the personnel report per se. Yes, sir. Mid Cumberland situation. And I, I, because I think I was reading something-
With, with the Head Start?
Yeah.
You can sit down, Ralph. Uh, Mid Cumberland, as you know, the, the Head Start contract that we have is with Mid Cumberland. They are going through a transition. We met with their transition team, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, and they presented a contract. We had some changes to it. I have not heard back from them, but I think we're probably still on schedule for you all to approve that new contract in October. It will look almost exactly like the current contract. Carissa is working, I know, with the, with the preschool coach, but I don't think you've had any contact with Mid Cumberland, right? So I think they're progressing with, with their work as far as getting a transition team. That, that's already in place and we have not heard any more, but I expect to and we'll let you know when we do. I don't foresee any major changes with what-
But it will be a different organization?
It will be a different organization, um, but there, there may be some similarities as far as personnel.
Okay. Thank you. I wish I could think of another question to ask Ralph, but I just cannot.
All right, revenue report, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, yes, good evening, board. We're at the 16.7% of the first two months of the year. As always, the first few months of the year, we're, we're in the red. We're negative, we're negative $2.5 million at this point on cash. The good news is our sales tax collections are up $50,000 for the first month. Sales tax always lags, even though it's the second month report, sales tax always lags a month behind. So we're up $50,000 over where we were last year at this time. Overall, our revenue picture is looking where, where it should be. So we feel pretty good about that. On the expenditure side, with the opening of Salem, it has a whole lot of front-end loaded expenses to put into that school. And that's what's put us in, in a situation and also as far as the expenditures being higher. And also when we, um, last year when we switched over our insurance to a, to an independent carrier, we did it in September. This year it started in July and so we had to pay it upfront, was like $600,000. Last year we didn't pay that until September. So this time it got hit on this report, 600. Uh, so it was quite a, quite a extra amount of money. But overall, we should be okay as the things settle out during the year. But like I said, opening up Salem is a big front-end expenditure. And of course, the state of Tennessee does not recognize the school until it's been operating. And so there's no money come from the state for the beginning of opening the school. So it basically falls on the school district, cash flow, all that. And that's where we are.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Ballard, I mean, yeah, Mr. Ballard, that's your name, yeah. I'm getting it.
Regarding Salem and the geothermal system that we put in, everything up and running and, and working? And Mr. Pettit is here, he could answer, I guess, if there's any questions. But are there any answers that you can't provide? But are we green light and good to go on that?
Well, the geothermal system is working.
Yes.
Working very well.
Yeah.
As far as I know, I haven't heard any come-
I haven't, I haven't heard anything.
And Mr. Duke is here, anything with it? Thumbs up on the HVAC. I don't think you're worried about the heat right now, it's just the HVAC. Heat's working fine. We know it works on the cool side.
We had, we had the humidity problem when we did Pitter.
Did.
So they don't have it?
No, and that, back, back when we did, the first school we did geothermal was John Pitter.
Yeah.
And when they put in the, um, the humidif, the humidification system and that, the wheels that run it were reversed. They wired them backwards. And obviously, they learned from that. And we didn't do it at Overall Creek and we didn't do it at Salem. So that's why you had that, and you had a bad humidity problem in that office area.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Director's State of Schools report.
At this point, I'm going to ask the instruction team to, to come up. Wanted to give you a comprehensive, uh, look at the, at the district. As you know, you all have four primary goals. And so this will be divided up tonight into those four goals. But it's curious, I'll bring up the PowerPoint, which I am grateful. So as you know, your vision is Murfreesboro City Schools will create a culture of collaborative learning focusing on the whole child, assuring success in the global community. There are some really important words there that, that we try to focus on as a district led by board leadership. The idea of collaborative culture. So I think in recent years, we certainly have, have proven that. Also focusing on the whole child, which means your academic, your, your health, your behavioral, all of the things that make up children. Think we've seen evidence of that tonight. We'll be talking some more about that. As far as the mission statement, this is the one that I guess is on every school now, to assure academic and personal success to each child. And what we know is that one big part of that, of course, is the, um, the goals that fall underneath that. Our first goal is that we will educate the whole child to achieve their highest potential in the global community. And so that means looking at that whole child. That means looking ahead at 2050 instead of looking back at 1950. And so one of the key components of that is accountability that we have as a district. And so at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Kimberly because she knows more about that than I do, that's for sure.
So I'm going to try to walk you through this and if I say something that you don't understand, please feel free to stop me because I hate to go through the whole thing and you really don't get what I'm talking about. So if you look on there, you have the AMO column, you have the absolute performance column, and you have a value added, and you have an overall score. So when a school gets a score based on its AMOs, which are set by the state annually, so base, go ahead.
Is that this page, is that what we're looking at?
It's the page-
We don't have that, that's not in this handout?
I think it's page two.
It should be.
Page two, okay. Thank you, I just, I didn't, I didn't have it anywhere else.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you have the AMO pathway and the absolute performance pathway. Those are based off of the AMOs that's set by the state each year based on content areas. And when it says success rate, that means that's a combination of the ELA in math or whatever content areas are being accounted for that year. So last year, what was accounted for? Go ahead.
And AMO stands for?
Annual Measurement Objective.
Thank you.
Which, which looks at the proficiency rate of the number of tests with the students that are proficient on the test. So you have a success rate which accounts for all of the content areas that's on the accountability. So last year we had ELA and math in accountability. So the proficiency rate of ELA plus the proficiency rate of math equals the success rate. So that's why you see success rate over there on the side for grade three, five, six, eight, nine, 12, which we don't have, chronically out of school, English language learners, and graduation rate, which we do not have. So those blank ones belong to those school systems that have a K-12 system. So you have the AMO and you look at the bottom of your sheet and you should have a scale that's at the bottom that, um, if you have AMOs, that you can either meet the AMO or you can meet the absolute performance. So you get two scores and they take the highest of those two. And they average the highest of those two with a value added. For example, on the grade three, five success rate, you have AMO of a three, you have absolute performance of a four. So the higher of the two is the absolute performance. So they add the four and the four for value added, divide and you get four. Same thing with the one for AMO for six grades success rate with the absolute performance. The two is the higher, so they take the two and add that with the value added and the three. The value added is a constant.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask, what the value added is.
The value added is a constant. So the only choices, where the choice comes from is the AMO and the absolute performance pathway.
And it's a constant across the state, across the district?
Across the state.
Okay, all right.
And so if you notice that there is a zero to four scale and then they have the overall score on the side and down there where it says achievement determination is where they get the average of those scores. And then a district gets its score. So for this, we have exemplary and you'll see that's on a scale from 3.0 to 4.0. Questions before I move to the next one? So on this one, I think I can go if you top.
So is, what you're explaining to us, is this what we were judged to be reward school?
Yes, sir.
And, okay.
It, this, this is your district. Your reward schools really are, are based in, on individual schools. They also have a success rate for each school.
So this would be the exemplary-
This is the district. This is the district for-
So each school also receives one of these reports, which determines what status they fall in? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm just trying to understand the reward and exemplary and, and what the measurements are and what we're using as, as a measure.
This is the district measurement. Each school has the same thing.
Yeah.
And so each school, if they had a 3.1 for their final average, they were considered a reward school.
Can we be exemplary without meeting the AMOs?
You can.
Okay. Can a school get a rewards without meeting AMO?
You cannot meet an AMO in a content area, but you still probably got, came close to the success rate, yes.
Okay, so we're looking for another part of that then to make us a reward school or an exemplary district?
Right.
This is one part of it.
Yes, so I'm going to go back to the slide right here. When you look at the AMO, you can either do the AMO or the absolute performance. So you get those two scores and they take the highest of the two.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I, I think I'm getting there, so thank, go ahead.
And so these, this is where our subgroups come in. There are four subgroups that every school and district is judged by, which is your economically disadvantaged, your black, Hispanic, and Native American, your English language learners, and your students with disabilities. So again, you have the AMO, you have an AMO pathway, which is on another sheet that you have. But these are the averages, once they do the AMO pathway or the absolute, combined with the value added. So this is the scores that each one of those categories receive. And again, you do the average on the side, combine those, and we were 3.03, which put us in the advancing category because we were not a 3.1, which would have been needed to route to get us to the exemplary category. So we were advancing for the subgroups and we were exemplary in the AMO category.
I have a comment.
Ms. Barton?
Oh, go ahead, went away.
Oh, go back.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This one?
The English language proficiency.
Uh-huh.
Were the two.
That's this right here? Yes. Your question?
I don't know, I just feel bad, I, we always struggle with that subgroup, and that was one of the reasons I talked so much about it last year, because I feel like they don't have enough support. So, and I know, Kimberly, aren't you the one that's supposed to be helping them this year, is that right? No, it's you? Okay. But, I mean, Sherry's got 100 other things to do too, I know, so, I just, I worry.
And so if we look at the T-VAS levels, again, these, these pathways are from zero to four, so four being the highest, zero being the lowest, based on those rubrics at the bottom. When you go to T-VAS, it is a level one through a level five. Level three being the state, meeting state expectation. Level four and five meeting, mean that the group is above the state level of expectation. So if you look all the way down, grade three ELAs a five, four ELAs a five, grade five ELAs a four, six ELAs a three, with a cumulative average for ELA for the district would be a level five. Math, grade three is a five, math, grade four is a five, math, grade five is a five, grade six is a five with a cumulative average of a five, and social studies, which was not included in the accountability, but it is included in the T-VAS, we were a level four.
Just to make sure everyone understands, so the T-VAS, that's growth, is that?
That is growth, correct. And so here are our numbers for the subgroups. We have fives all the way down for these content, for each of the subgroups, except for the students with disability in the sixth through eighth grade, which has a level three. So we're meeting state expectation, of course, we want to be a five in all content areas and all subgroups. That is a goal for the district. So exemplary districts that surround us in the middle Tennessee area, I think this is the middle Tennessee area, not really sure where somewhere, upstate of Tennessee, and Murfreesboro is in good company, if you notice. And I do want you to notice Murfreesboro. Student success, level five, English language arts, level five in math, level five in nine out of 10 possible subgroups, level five in six out of nine grade level content areas, and that is T-VAS data. Seventy-five percent of the schools were reward schools, second highest percent of reward schools in the state for district with more than three schools. We were the highest percent of reward schools in the state for districts with more than seven schools, and we have no schools on the CSI, TSSI, and ATSIS list. So those are targeted lists from the state based on a list of circumstances, and if you would like those, I do have a sheet that can explain those to you. You have any other questions about the data that was presented?
So the AMOs that we talked of, that you gave me the copy, I, do you all have anything for that? And I don't want it broken out, obviously, by school, just by kind of in a general pattern. I, we didn't make our AMOs in language arts in a single school, is that not correct?
That is correct, we did not meet the AMO any.
Math in all of it, I think two, or three, I can't remember, but.
I think it was one school that did meet.
Okay, all right, which is fabulous, I mean, you know, so proud of us for math, but it just, I think, says again that we need a language arts curriculum, and we do have one with the expeditionary learning, but I'm hearing from teachers, they're being told not to use it as a curriculum, so.
And I would like Karissa to speak on ELA, I'm just today.
I will note that last year, we were a level three in ELA, a level one in math, and this year, a level five in both, which is phenomenal. And, and I think if you look at where we are as far as number of award schools, and also exemplary district, I think that's pretty amazing. So I really, really appreciate the work the teachers and the students and administrators have done this last year.
So expeditionary learning was purchased for grades three through six across the district, and it is an online curriculum that, we've talked about this some, we've purchased trade books for students. So students have books in their hands, which is what I'm most excited about. I was in classrooms yesterday, walking through, and kids had books in their hands, so that was very exciting. So what we are asking teachers to do is to begin with the STEAM planning, and then deeply plan their reading through the STEAM planning. And so when we say use it as a resource, what that means is they can use the, the books, they can use any of the materials, but they don't necessarily have to follow it word for word if it doesn't match what they're doing in their STEAM planning. And so it's a little more work than just following it, you know, word for word. So, but our huge focus, and the focus for me is, we did go from a one to a three to a five, so I don't want to lose that work that we've done.
I don't either, no.
And so one of the major things that, and I've been in four schools now, one of the major things we're looking at is making sure we're doing our standards first. And so it is Common Core aligned, which is very similar to Tennessee, but what I want to make sure is that the teachers, as they're teaching these lessons, they really have their eye on that standard, and know what standard they're teaching, and make sure that their teaching point is around that reading standard and reading, and their indirect teaching point being integration within their STEAM unit. So it's, it's a learning process, how to take these materials and really marry that wonderful work we've done the last two years in learning our standards, because I will say, as the reading coordinator, I know standards better than I've ever known them. And, but now, we have these wonderful materials that we can use to teach the standards through, but we've got to keep our eye on that standard.
How many, are all the schools using expeditionary?
As far as I know, it is, it's in every school.
It's for everybody, right?
It's in, it is in every school, and as far as I know, I mean, I've, I've been doing major walkthroughs, and I'm seeing it in every school that I'm in. The, I believe, seven of our schools at this point have bought it, purchased the books for second grade.
Right.
So I'm doing training for second grade as we go now, as well.
The overwhelming response, when I was in Schools Friday Reading, was they love it. They think it's really good. They're concerned because they feel like if it's not sequential, it loses some of its, I hate to say steam, but for lack of a better word, you know? So that's the only thing I have, that I worry about with kind of pulling pieces out of it to go with the STEAM planning, is going to potentially diminish the effectiveness of expeditionary learning.
Yeah, and we have to be really careful doing that, because the modules do build on each other, so this is much of the conversation. And to me, it goes back to that deep planning and really understanding two things, and I don't want to get too deep into it, but, you know, I love it, so I'll talk about it a little bit. Making sure we're teaching comprehension processes along with the product of the standard. And it does a really, really good job of teaching those processes, like predicting and synthesizing information. Whereas the standard, we're teaching them, this is a main idea, but how do we get students to learn that main idea? So it does build, and so we do have to be very careful about that.
That was just this year, right?
That was this year, we rolled it out. The books arrived two or two weeks ago. The company was a little behind in getting them to us, but I'm going to tell you, our teachers stepped up and made do, and they have done a terrific job. And now they're really working on, you know, it's new, and so anything that's new takes some time. What I don't want people doing is just going, oh, I have this curriculum, I, I'm good to go. There's a lot of planning still. It's not a reading streak, and we had reading streak before, where there were blue letters, you could read them. But it's, it's definitely very deep and focuses on building students' knowledge and content areas. Which is what we're doing in STEAM, so it's nice, sorry.
It's, it's meeting the standard, and I guess, because we've heard this again, you know, on a couple of occasions, it has to do with not necessarily that we didn't want to do it, but the getting up to what the state wanted, or hitting that moving target has been the issue, am I right?
It has been, and when you look at the reading achievement across the state, it wasn't good, because I can tell you, achievement came out first, and districts across were called, you know, it was embargoed, so we couldn't tell each other our scores, but people were panicking. And then, you know, when growth came out, we felt a little better, but we are committed, I mean, it is a piece of that puzzle, that we want to keep that growth to pull up our achievement, because we really, we want our kids achieving in our district, in every content area.
And I would like to add too, that Karissa took it a step further. I'd seen this curriculum in East Tennessee. Yeah, and, and seen it done very well, and the scores were amazing. But the problem teachers had with it on the front end was that it's, it's a little daunting, because there's so much to it. And so Karissa, bless her heart, took it apart, basically, by grade level, am I right? And kind of mapped out by quarter, correct? I don't want to misquote you, but mapped out by quarter what they, what they need to do and when. And so that, I, I told her, she has no idea how much difference that itself is going to make, because they, the teachers I saw teach it, loved it, but they didn't love it in the beginning, because there was so much to it that they had a hard time following it.
It's hard, it is not an easy curriculum to follow, but it is, it is really good. But it's not, I always say it's not a magic bullet, but it's a bullet, and our teachers and coaches are putting the magic on it. And so, you know, that magic is making sure, because I keep saying they're going to get, because I get on these little things, and mine right now is explicitly teaching the standard, because we were so good at that, we don't want to lose that, and the integration as well.
Can I say something? When we do the reading adoption in 2020, will this be like a resource, a supplement? How will we implement this, continue, will we?
My hunch is it'll be a part of the reading adoption, it will be one of the choices. And another thing I've just learned, and I've got a sample account from LearnZillion, they have taken it, taken what I, kind of what I did, but it's like what I did on steroids, because they make money doing it. And, I mean, I make money being the reading coordinator too, but, but they have taken it and put it into a very teacher-friendly platform, and so they've given us access, and we've given access to a few teachers to try it out. And it's, it's taking those web-based lessons and put them into a lesson plan format, it's much easier to read. And so they've been very, and I, I said, what is my, what do I, what can I not do with this? He said, let people use it, I want to see what they think, because I really feel like they think, if they use it, they're going to want it. So we have, some of our teachers are using it and finding it very helpful. And my understanding is, the adoption process is still up in the air, we do not have a list. From my understanding, the next reading's not even till October, so I really don't know what's going to happen for that, and we just couldn't wait another year, because we do have growth, we're proud of our growth, and we want to up that achievement in reading as well. So, you know, that's, that's why we're all here, we want our kids to succeed.
What we're seeing with, with other districts is similar to what we've had to do. You have Rutherford Williamson, Wilson, that are writing, writing their own curriculum, writing their own curriculum, because the standards, again, and you've heard this from me before, but it's a real issue. When they adopted, they didn't want to go Common Core, so they adopted Tennessee standards, so there's nothing that matches, which is what she's talking about. We were talking the other day, and the concern of not going backwards, because there's not a curriculum that's going to match what Tennessee's done. And I, we did get commitment that the next adoption, they would not change the standards in the middle of an adoption, which they did last time, but there's a real issue with, right now at the state, with what's going to be adopted. And so while they said that it would be 90% line, I'm doubting that tremendously. My understanding is, though, we did get word, and I haven't officially gotten word from the state, but that probably the accountability will not change. There was some discussion of just going with achievement, and some of us said, well, if you just go with achievement and not growth, and just put a sticker on, depending on where your high-income children live, because that's, that's where achievement is going to be. So I think the growth will still be part of it, and I think still will be part of it. I think the attendance and the ALPA, there's some discussion about what that other will be, but I haven't heard that that's going to really change, so I'm hoping that we'll hear over the next few weeks. That was one request, is that we find out what the accountability's going to be for next year before it gets much later in the year. So we'll see what the state does.
And all that's really important, but I know every teacher in our district just wants their kids to, to read and learn. I mean, that's, and do math. Thank you, and do math. And I did want to plug, for Mr. Campbell, be on the lookout for some bee habitats at the Black Fox Garden. Our first grade at Black Fox, they're working on pollination and their science standards and reading all about that, and they've learned that some of our bees are dying, and so they're engineering habitats, but there are some pretty constraints and criteria they have to use, because they have to have all natural materials, there are all these things that bees require, or they won't come. And so our first grade will be constructing those, and they've got to figure out where to hang them out there, where it would be best, what are the flowers they have to plant for the bees to come, so that's kind of the real-world connections they're putting in. But we also, in all that planning, separately, we looked at, what do we need kids reading to teach those reading standards? And so really marrying all those things is where those good connections will come in. So be on the lookout for the bee houses.
And I want to give Cindy, I, I want to give you a chance to talk a little bit, because we did see tremendous math growth, so Cindy, as always, she always has to insert herself with math, so I want to give you your time to shine.
Well, what would you like me to speak on? In math-wise, but I want to say this, because I hear a lot about, well, you know, when you say curriculum, whatever, but what I want to say, it's those teachers, and, so thank you for giving me that opportunity, because they come in and they work so hard every day. So, you know, they're the ones calling, texting, and making sure those students have that. So when I look at those scores, all I say is, oh my gosh, they're amazing, that's all I'm going to say, so. But it was, it was excellent, and can I do my little plug about?
Are you going to?
Okay. The other thing that I am the most proud about, I said, I don't get emotional about data, because my team tells me it's not emotional, data's data, but every student in Murfreesboro City Schools, grades three through six, improved their math scores. Every, all students. And, you know. So, and you're applauding, you're applauding those teachers, because I said, if I was, right now, if I had my own classroom, I'd be going in and going, and your math score improved, and your math score improved, because that's how I feel. And those teachers, when Kimberly goes and meets with them, I don't know where she went, and she says, you know, you have to have names, every student, you know, it's that plus one, every student grows, those teachers really worked so hard to make sure that happened, so kudos to them.
Cindy did a great job too, talking about mathematical practice this, this year, and really, really focused on that, and that was huge, I think.
It was, it was a big, it was a game changer, and, and I appreciate Dr. Gilbert, because when I went to her with the idea of, there's eight math teaching practices, and I said, really, these eight practices, if they're put in place, that they, you know, it will help instruction, because that's what it takes, it's the instruction, right, that moves students. And when she sat down, she looked at them, and of course, they all say math, you know, like mathematical discourse, mathematical goals. And when we met, she goes, I believe we could take the math out, and these would be eight goals, you know, and I'm like, okay, we'll take the math out, and we, and so from the beginning of last year, we kind of centered that. So when the principals came in for the meetings, we talked about, I know they're like, yeah, we did. Every meeting, any professional development, we kind of geared it around those eight math teaching practices, or eight teaching practices. And, and the teachers really took it to heart. I know when I went into Segal, they had it up in their planning room, you know, and that really, I felt like last year helped really drive that, kind of bring us together and think about, how are we teaching our students? And we're carrying that into this year, because last year was a big year for discourse. How do we get student-to-student discourse, get our students talking about math? This year, we're looking at connections, which is another big teaching practice, so, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions about math?
So I'm going to go down there. So when we talk about success, and we talk about that first goal, it deals with academics certainly, but it deals with, with the rest of children too. So you have some pictures here on, on the PowerPoint. If you look in the left corner, you will find, we're talking about RTI 2B, and of course, Bradley and Overall Creek were two out of three goal-level schools in the Vanderbilt Behavior Support Project across the state. If you look at the next picture to the right, you'll see our Junior Chef Academy, which was awarded the Tennessee Department of Health Platinum Bright Spot Award. If you move on over to the right, you'll see a young man there who is holding an award that is talking about being the National Quiz Bowl Champion, which of course, Discovery was. On your left bottom corner, you will see the picture taken from not this past year, but the year before, where the National Invention Convention, they won the Henry Ford Award, but also this year, we also had a group from Segal who won the Industry Innovation Award. In the center, our bus red carpet, which, which has to do with bus behavior, this is where our buses, a bus is honored, and all the faculty come out, and they, they cheer And they, they cheer the children, they're given a certificate, so they're awarded for their behavior. And then on the right side, you have, of course, the Tennessee State Fair, Vegetables with ESP, and also Farm to School that we honor tonight. As we go on, uh, we have, whoops, we don't go on. Okay, we have the Blue Ribbon of School, of course, was Discovery. We had a sixth grader in the top 10 in the net, in the Tennessee Math Competition. We had two state-designated STEM schools. There are 20 in the state. We now have, uh, two that are designated, and we'll have two more that actually have completed their, their, uh, application, and so we'll hear from that in a few months. We had five of the top 10 in the Middle Tennessee Science Olympiad Schools. We had a student published in the National Honor Society. So again, showing that commitment to the whole child. With these pictures, we have the exemplary access district, which our school received. It has to do with making sure that all students have access to high learning. The picture there in the center is from the Frist Art Show. We had our first art show at the Frist last year. They're very excited about our coming again this spring, so we'll be doing that. And then on the right side is a real, real pride that we have with our Camp Borough, which is for our special needs children. On the bottom left, we have the If I Have a Hammer Program. That's a real-world building program where we have students that go to Hobgood. And for two hours, they actually build a house. So again, the applied learning. In the center, last year, that was our first year for our drone racing team. And so you have the winners there, and of course, we'll be having that again this year. And then on the right, we have our graduates from the Gifted Academy. This is a partnership with the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation, through which so many of our teachers have been trained with Gifted. Moving on, their Scholars Program, which is part of our Gifted Program. The Integrated Pre-K, which is a great hit, where we have typically developing peers and with special needs tiers. Still to Borough, you know about. In fact, they just recently performed at the Conditions for Learning Forum. The Music Festival that we have, where we have all of our children, and we're hoping to move that to MTSU this year. The city, uh, the city art, uh, show that we have here. Lego Robotics Teams, we have those that have qualified, several schools that qualify for Nationals. But we now have Lego Robotics in almost all of our schools. Running Clubs in several of our schools, the Borough Book Battle, which our librarians do. And also we had a National Beta Club, School of Merit. That, that kind of rounds out our first goal. There are several other things that we could have listed, but I really wanted to point out what kind of makes us different. Goal two has to do with partnerships. And one of our big secrets to success is the partnerships that we have. So on the left, this year, we have started a partnership with the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue. That's really a STEAM instruction. In fact, we had some of our coaches that worked with them to develop the curriculum. But it is for second graders. And so this young man, last year, we had, one of the pilots was at Hobgood. And, uh, he had done a poster contest and had won it. So he was carried to school on the fire truck. And that was really pretty cool to see him do that. Books on the bus is going strong. In fact, we have formed a partnership with Lineball that is helping us with that. And we were just talking about that this morning. I think you'll see us doing some things through the week in addition to in the, uh, summer, of course. But I believe last summer, um, we had, I believe it was over 3,000 books that, that we actually, uh, gave away last year. So that, that was last summer. That was pretty amazing. And then on right, we have our bowling league. And I know that at least one member of the board has discovered that we have a bowling league. Uh, Ms. Moore was telling me that her child is actually going to participate in that this year. So that is a great partnership with Lanes, Trains, and Automobiles. And we're actually partnering with them, uh, with a reward program now too this year. So we expanded that. On the left at the bottom, this was last year, we partnered with Feed My Starving Children, and we had, and also Kids Helping Kids Organization. We had folks that packed over 140,000 meals that went to other places around the world. So that was a real service learning project for some of our, our students and our staff, but also the partnerships that came in. On the right, you have our partnership that we're showing there with, um, with, uh, United Way. They have the Hometown Huddle. They also do Stuff the Bus. They pay for our, our partnership with, um, Stars. And also work with Bradley After-School Tutoring. So United Way is a strong partner. Then you have some other things listed here as far as new things this year. We will be having a partnership with TCAT and renewing that partnership. So you'll hear more about that. The Go USA, we're doing again in Discovery Center and adding Lanes, Trains, and Automobiles to help us with behavior rewards and also with attendance rewards. The Chamber of Commerce has become a very strong partner with us, especially with their STEAM, with workforce development. We have a principal that sits on each of their, their five main, um, areas of their, their career development and workforce development. So that's, that's been a great thing. And I think you'll see us expanding game nights again this year. Um, Centerstone is very strong with us and Stars. We continue to work with, uh, our mental health. And so those, those two areas are very strong with us, helping with our students and our behavior. Trust Point is ready to step forward. And then, of course, we're continuing our partnership with Special Kids. We do have a date in October when the Murfreesboro Symphony Orchestra will be performing again when we have our Hispanic Heritage Day. Then, uh, some more pictures. If you look on the left, that is Club Marvel. This is a program that we have once a month that the outreach team works with here. They're working with Concrete, our students are. And we have between 60 and 100 students that participate once a month at MTSU. Each department over there really plans the day, so that's really a blessing. The center picture at the top is a gentleman from St. Mark's. We have very strong partnerships with our churches that come into our schools, and we're very grateful for them. Of course, the picture on the right is the famous trip to MTSU. On the left, Habitat for Humanity, we had our Leadership Students and our Leadership Academy that helped with the panel bill last year, and we foresee doing it, that again this year. We are handing out at the bottom center, uh, we're taking those signs to churches that have strong partnerships with us, and we're presenting them during a worship service. And then on the right, this is from our Reading in the Schools Day, which is a partnership with Read to Succeed. Continuing, the Department of Health is one that I want to point out here. Um, I've sent to you how much they do as far as the dental. They work with sealants with their children, fluoride treatments, referrals. So that's an extremely, uh, important partnership for us. Amazon is a new partnership. Some of you attended the, the, uh, event at Hobgood where they presented us with a check. Murfreesboro Housing Authority continues to be a strong partner. We still have a preschool at a site on Hancock. And also the, uh, building that was the site of a preschool over in Oakland Court is now our Family Resource Center site. And so we'll be using that for this year. And then you know already the partnerships we have with the, the rest of the listing there. The third goal has to do with culture, and it has to do with a culture that invites the highest-quality personnel to ensure student success. So here, you're talking about recruitment, you're talking about retention, you're talking about what we do to make sure that our teachers have what they need. But not only our teachers, but the rest of our personnel. So the top bullet there has to do with the kinds of, uh, gatherings that we have. Teacher-to-teacher is for our new teachers. The Leadership Academy, we have the Aspiring Administrators, Aspiring Educators Academy. All have to do with nurturing our, our teachers and our leaders. Uh, we have our coaches, as you know, behavior specialists, social workers, academic interventionists. And I want to thank the board for their support because I was in a meeting of superintendents a couple of weeks ago, and I can assure you that not everybody has social workers. And those have made a world of difference to us, so I really appreciate that. Little Sprouts Daycare is for our employees, and I think we stay pretty full, Mr. Ringstaff, with our, especially with our younger ones. In fact, I think we have a waiting list. Of course, ESP is free to full-time staff. And then the full days of PD have been really good this year. Um, was really pleased with the reports that I heard from the two days. So when we're working on the calendar, I'll be presenting you again with full days instead of half-days. It makes a world of difference. And probably we'll present them again on Friday, because I heard real positives from that with having, not only from families, but also from staff, so that they weren't having to think about that next day, what am I going to be teaching, what am I going to be working on? But they really could take that, that full day for a time for planning. So I appreciate that. The math and reading cohorts, um, Cindy, you started the math cohorts, I guess, a couple of years ago, maybe? Three years ago? And then Carissa has started the reading cohorts this year. So these are teachers that meet after school and are learning more about those particular content areas. I wanted to show you this because I think, uh, this is pretty impressive. In 2018, and these are the different levels of teachers. So again, talking about the growth that teachers give to students. So how they grow students, again, ranging from level one to level five. In 2018, we had, uh, 22% were fours and fives. And then we had our threes there. When, when you move to that next year or this past year, you're looking at, um, the fours and fives being 41%. So I think that what we're doing to grow teachers is really making a difference. Now, I understand that this variance can really be there and can change from year to year. But I think that that's, that says something about, uh, where we're trying to move as a district to make sure, and the state pushes us all the time, to make sure that our teachers are as many fours and fives as we can possibly have. And the way that we do that, of course, is, is helping them grow. And then finally, under quality personnel, um, as far as the, well, I don't guess this will be the final. There's more. The social workers were honored by DCS. We had our Transportation Supervisor that was a Region 3 Director. Our Nutrition Person was also a leader in the state. We had a person on the Advisory Committee of the CMA, uh, Tennessee Advisory, which had to do with a grant. Uh, Mr. Anderson is an EESI, which is Energy Efficiency Council member. We had a Teacher Educator Fellowship Member and also a RTI State Consultant. So our personnel are taking leadership roles as the state level. On this particular, uh, group of pictures, I want to point out a couple. The one in the center at the top, of course, is our Job Fair that we have. And I think that's really helped us with recruitment. We're recruiting earlier and earlier, and we're having to, and that's important. On the left bottom is our New Teacher Orientation. This is a several-day process, and yes, they do get treats when they come. And then, of course, there's our First Miss Tennessee there in the center. And then, uh, you may notice that that kind of looks like the Lyles family there on the right. But this is the Breakfast for Santa that our employees seem to enjoy so much. Again, talking about award winners, you have them listed there. But again, just showing that our folks are leading. And by the way, the Tennessee Teacher of the Year will be announced this Friday night. So we're wishing Sarah Chumney the very best. But, um, the signing day has been a real hit, and thank you all for coming and seeing that. Um, but, but that day when you can actually, we can actually welcome the new folks aboard has, has been really beneficial. The fourth goal has to do with safe, healthy, clean, well-maintained, so the environment, being operationally efficient. One thing we're very grateful for is we now have an SSEO in each building. And that is tremendous. And we have an attorney onboard full-time. So those two things have been real blessings. Farm to School, we've already talked about that today, but, but our children having those experiences of really digging in the dirt literally, and also connecting that to content area. The Chow Bus served over 60,000 breakfasts last summer at 28 different sites. And then on the right there, we have Barney, who is our Bus Safety Officer. And he trains our children in bus safety every, every year. We have an annual safety audit. So what that looks like is we have a safety person who goes with Murfreesboro Police Department. And there is a, uh, form that is worked out by Homeland Security. And they check each school to see what we need to do to make sure that we have the safety that we need. Positive fiscal and food service audits. We, the bus videos you have seen, very grateful for the partnership with Murfreesboro Police Department there. We now have a Certified Playground Safety Specialist. That's a big deal, and it's tough to get. And so we're very grateful for that. So we have a person that can inspect our, our playgrounds, among other things that he does. Um, the cultural competency training is something that you'll hear us talk more about this year. It's something we've begun. It's really, really important. We want to make sure that we're reaching out to all of our subgroups. And so Joe Marlin is heading that up, and, and you'll hear more about that. Then finally, the ACEs Training, which is Adverse Childhood Experiences. We still continue to have that. We still continue to have restorative practices training. But, uh, there are a couple of other things that I do want to mention. Um, one of the partnerships that isn't on here is the Second Harvest Food Bank with the backpacks. And also, um, we continue to work with, uh, with our state to move toward support for behavior. So this year, as far as goals, you've already heard Carissa and Cindy talk about, make sure we keep it growth. And also the cultural competency and seeing what we can do, um, about outside providers for mental health. I have been in touch with the Commissioner of Education and the Commissioner of Mental Health. I do expect us to have a meeting about that. But that is a real concern with, with districts across the state, is our younger children. And so we have gone, and what I have told the state is, we, we have the internal resources. What we need are the external resources. So if we need your help with that, I will let you know. But right now, we're in the beginning talking stages, but it's something that's critically important to us. All of that is for this. So those faces right there that we carry with us wherever we go. Um, I've used that, I think, on PowerPoint for the last three years. But as long as we can keep seeing the faces of children, then that makes all the difference in the world. Questions that you have about anything we're doing?
I don't have a question.
Yeah, just a comment.
Uh, you know, I still go back to every time, we've got such outstanding teachers. I mean, they take nothing, and they do everything with it. And, and that's where a lot of this comes from. You know, they, the people that are helping to run some of these things, it's volunteer. They're not compensated for their time. They just love the kids, and they want to do it for the kids. And of course, I go back to the principals, the central office support people. Um, you know, we're very lucky. We've got a lot of talented people, and that's what keeps us afloat, those talented people.
We do, and I think this district too, with support staff. I think what you hear from the nurses, I don't know of, of other schools, for example, that have Farm to School, that really embedded into that classroom. Um, the idea that, that you have maintenance that, that is going to come in, and they're going to read, or they're going to talk about woodworking, or they're going to talk about how they, they work with schools and build schools. So it is, it is that partnership, that collaboration that we talk about that happens among teachers, it happens among the educational assistants, it happens among the support staff. Because last night, we had, uh, the Leadership Academy. And I asked them, I said, we were talking about Murfreesboro City. And I asked them, I gave them five minutes to list everything they could list. And they came up with this whole long list. And I said, okay, I said, is it too much? And I waited, and they said, no. And I said, well, how do you explain to somebody then, that's not in this district, how this works? Because you have all this stuff that's listed. And what they said is, they said, but everybody does a piece of it. And I think that everybody does a piece of it is absolutely huge. So from, from the board, all, all the way through. Making sure that parents are onboard, making sure that the community is onboard, and making sure that our employees know that they, they are cared about and they're loved. It's huge. And so I think the recognition that you've had tonight of where this school district is as far as exemplary district of non-reward schools, which is unheard of, by the way. Not having an ATSI when other, other folks around do, not having anything that, that is going to be negative toward that. And all it takes is one subgroup to not hit it. So those schools that are on ATSI status, don't give them too bad a time. Because, um, if you're a diverse district, and if you have, um, if your socioeconomics are not high, then you have some challenges. So I think, speaking to what Ms. Barton said, that just, just the, the work that is done here by the people that are here, and the commitment to this school district is just absolutely outstanding. So thank you all for your, your leadership in that.
Thank you. Very good report. Appreciate it. All right, do we have, uh, I will make one announcement. We will not meet October the 8th. That is the next time in, that Tuesday in October, that's fall break. And some of you will be out of town. So we will not meet again until 8:14, 22nd of October. Any other visits to come before the board, Ms. Barton?
Yes, where are we with technology? That was the second thing I heard a lot about when I was in schools.
Well, that, we're in, waiting on the city council.
Well, how long has it been? I mean, how long have we had to ask city council for money for technology?
How long have we had to ask them for technology?
Because I, I don't remember it always happening. That's why I'm asking.
Well, that's, that's because we had, if you remember, we purchased technology six years ago, and so it's lasted, but we have to have it now. So that's where we are. It's in the capital improvement plan, and we're waiting for that to be approved.
Do we have, and I don't remember from the budget, but is it not possible for us to put a substantial amount of money in some kind of a, an account so that five years from now, we're able to do this again? I mean, I just feel like I hate to depend on city council as to whether or not we get them.
Well, well, we pretty much have to because of, of, we are not, you know, when you look at our budget and what we're spending on, it's just not there. Now, there was enough in technology, in, in the equipment, I guess it was equipment repair.
Now, there was enough in technology, in the equipment, I guess it was equipment repair budget, that we were able to fund our new teachers out of that, so our new teachers got it. But we're dependent upon council for that. There's no room in our budget for it at all.
Do I remember that we tried to do something like that, and we tried to do something like that with the budget? We tried to get some money out of them for that, outside of the capital, I like.
It's...
They found out and said, no. Is that what happened, Bill?
This is a conversation that's been going on for about six or eight months about how to deal with this and how to fund it, and there's lots of pieces to it, and certainly you are advocates for how this funding needs to occur. I think council is aware of that, trying to figure out exactly how to make the dollars work. Seems to never be enough money for the needs that are required. One of the things that I think we're trying to look is to structure this so that we don't have such a large number of replacement costs, so that we, on a regular basis, provide a smaller number, so you chew this elephant one bite at a time instead of having, what's come up now is that all of them have become obsolete at the same time, and so we're having to replace a huge number at a huge price tag. So now that we're trying to figure out exactly how to do that and fit that into the CIP with all the other needs that the community has to do. So you continue to do your advocacy for what needs to be done, and I can promise you that the council is aware of that, of your need, and we're trying to make that work as quickly as possible. City manager and the mayor and all of council is concerned about how to fund it and are aware of the price tag, so I just...
We've been at a conversation some while back, and I may have dreamed it with Google about laying some wireless for this area.
You're talking about the fiber?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's some issues about that too. So anyway, it's a long conversation. Like I say, you're in the midst of a conversation. Your needs are pressing right now, and I think we're trying to figure out exactly what is the best way to allocate the funds so that we can begin to introduce this to it. But one of the problems is that it's a large chunk at the beginning, and to try to recover all those costs right now is, we've got to make a plan so that we don't end up facing the same issue.
Right.
And if we, yeah, ten years in the future.
And what happened, of course, was we didn't have computers, and so six years ago, we had to buy them all.
Right.
And that makes it tough. So what we are looking at is buying over the next two years, and then spacing out, which makes a lot of sense, but when you, we have all your computers come and do at the same time, because that was the conversation we had.
That's the conversation.
Well, why are we hit right now? Well, we're hit right now because we didn't have anything six years ago, and so they were all purchased.
It's a shame we didn't think of that six years ago.
Or start replacing them before they're all breaking. You know, start at three years, a few of them, and then four.
Starting three years ago replacing, because in two and a half years, they're obsolete anyway.
How much did we put before the council to fund for the technology? How much was that?
I know we talked about it.
One point two million for the students, and I think it was nine hundred thousand for all teachers.
One point two for the...
For the students and nine hundred thousand for all the teachers at one time. Teacher computers are the same age, they're six years old.
Yeah, yeah.
And it would have been nice, when, in fact, we talked about initially, six years ago, can we spread this out? And at the time, it would have been, okay, we spread it out, then you're going to have some folks that don't have any at all for two or three years, so we need it.
Not if we divided them, right? I mean, if we'd divided them among schools and had them on cards, or, I don't know, I just wish we'd done something different so we don't end up like this because they have, and it's not city council's fault. I mean, it's just, they're awful. And they have so few now that even work, you know?
Well, we also have run into the problem because we did not and have not purchased this year, where classrooms may have had ten for twenty students. Now they have eight.
Or less.
For twenty students. So while Mr. Ballard is a teacher, and he's working with this group of eight, even if he borrows eight from across the hall, so he's got sixteen, so what is done with those other four students? I have a hard time understanding why we have to present our budget by the first of May, and here we are, almost at Halloween, and we haven't gotten it yet.
Oh, yes or no?
And I have, I had that conversation today with the gentleman who asked me that. But anyway, as it is, pray and keep on going.
I would just encourage, like Ms. Barton, excuse me, is saying, you know, we can't keep kicking the ball, the can down the road. We've got to start thinking outside the box, and if it means somehow we put aside a rainy day fund for that, or if it's looking for benefactors and...
Partnerships.
Partnerships, you know, whatever it can be, because every district in the country is dealing with this, I'm sure, and some of them have solved the problem, and we need to find out how they solved it.
I'm doing an interim right now with the county, and the classroom that I'm teaching in right now has five computers, and two of them don't work. So you do, teachers might do with it. You have small groups, and they rotate, so, I mean, it's not just the city school, it's, like you said, district-wide, it's statewide, so...
Does that school also have a computer lab?
Yes.
That's the difference between the city schools and the county schools. They have that computer lab, and we don't.
Right, and with the way our students use computers, they need them in the classroom.
Yeah, true, very true.
Does it matter whether it's laptops or pads? What is it?
With some programs, it will.
We're looking at Chromebooks this time instead of laptops, since everything goes to the cloud, they don't keep anything stored on the laptop.
So it's substantially cheaper than what our initial purchase was?
The purchase we made six years ago was five point two million to do the same thing we're doing this time at substantially less, and the price of computers have come way down.
Yeah, y'all told that to the city council, didn't you? You told them we're saving them four million dollars. Prices have gone up on everything else, but the computers have gone down. We're saving their money.
There we go.
I can promise you, the conversations have been pretty stringent and pretty frank with each other, so we've got to, we do, and I can promise you, we will advocate for an answer for you, and that's one of my roles, and I'll do that for you.
Thank you.
Our director has been a pretty good advocate.
Oh, I know.
I think, Mr. Anderson, I've all made it pretty clear, but it just, the issue is to try to, you know, there's lots of things that need to be addressed and to make sure we come to a conclusion and not just, we realize this is an opportunity, how about that? That's an optimistic way of looking at it. This is an opportunity for maybe to do a little planning as we're going forward in a lot of different areas, and I think we're going to be prudent in how we address this problem. But we are fully aware of the problem. I think the council is fully aware of the problem, and if they're not, I'll continue to remind them.
Well, we're grateful that you all are at least trying to help us with planning far ahead, you know, and not just solving the problem at hand, and I just don't want anybody to think that anybody's blaming city council because we don't have technology yet.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Barton. And quite honestly, that's how it's worked for years and years, is the fact that we see ourselves as colleagues.
Right.
Working for the common goal to try to do that, and that's what council tries to do as well, you know, is to make those decisions that are in the best interest and look at the bigger picture. And while you have an education, a very big picture to look at, there are so many other things to have to be addressed as well.
Absolutely.
And we try to do it in a prudent way, and when things like this, when problems are presented, I think, we just had a workshop a few weeks ago and discussed about opportunities that we face in the coming years, and one of them is certainly the increasing need and importance for addressing education in our community. And, you know, we all found out, you know, when you open a school, it's substantially, it's a huge investment, and it requires a lot of resources. And I think we kind of came together as a council and a school board and all of the other people came together to make it happen in a relatively short period of time. And so when you do that, you put pressure on other end, you know, it's like one of those pop-up toys, you pop one and another head pops up. Well, that's what's happened, is we're still trying to figure out how to address all the issues that are popping up. And, you know, I can promise you, this one will be addressed, and we're certainly aware of how important it is. You know, education doesn't happen without computers anymore. It seems like it, we require our teachers, I love the phrase that was used tonight, I'm going to talk too much, but I haven't talked any yet, so tonight, the idea that magic happens in the classroom, and it really does. It happens between the teacher and the students. I got to see that when we read in schools this week. It's just amazing what teachers do on a daily basis, and they need the resources, they need the tools to do that job more effectively. And I can promise you that the mayor and council are sensitive to that and realize the importance of what, you know, what it means to the quality of our life, what teachers do on a daily basis in our city. But again, you know, we'll work together and we'll find a solution, and hopefully it'll be something that can be, you know, can address this problem that'll be sustainable in the future, something that will meet our needs in the long term and not just for the immediacy. But keep pressing for us, keep talking to us, and keep advocating for the kids, and we'll find an answer.
And if you all could, if you, when you see council members, if you would express your appreciation for what they do, and share the positives about the district because you certainly have a lot of them. So I think the more positive you all can be about the district, the better the teachers feel about themselves, the better the community feels about the school district, because it's a pretty special district, and I think the scores certainly show that, among other things.
Absolutely.
And with the amount of industry coming in, just with all these acres of land that they're taking, it's just going to get worse before it gets better.
Well, man.
It's an opportunity.
That makes sense.
All right, anything else coming forward, Board, tonight?
Tomorrow, I'd just like to remind, twenty-five years ago, I met somebody that opened a school that my kids went to. Casey Lane opened up twenty-five years ago, and I became, served as PTO president there and very active with the opening of that school, and they're going to celebrate twenty-five years of serving this community. And at that time, we were trying some things a little different. We were trying to be on the cutting edge, and it was neat to see how parents and administrators and teachers and children worked together to try to do something really innovative in our community, and we've been doing that for all my life. Murfreesboro City School has been on the cutting edge of public education, and I just want to congratulate Casey Lane and all those people that have worked together to do that on a daily basis, but have, that worked together to bring Casey Lane to this point of celebrating twenty-five years of serving the young people of our community.
Well, I think we're having a parade and a little party in the morning at nine o'clock. Hope you'll be there.
I'll be there.
All right. Have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Good night.